Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I approve our January 15 notice that we have a minor correction of January 5th, nineteen, nineteen twenty.
Make another correction here.
I approve the approval as amended. As amended.
You're second.
Mark.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post motion carries. Next. Last month's meeting. Any additions or corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve our minutes for December fifteenth, twenty fourteen.
You're second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
General public, you got anything, Gary?
I was up here three weeks ago. We talked about that new power line coming through in driveways.
Yep.
Who said that poles are in the middle of the driveway?
I did. I was mistaken. Got off to the side.
Thirty feet.
Yep, well, roughly that, yeah.
I just think you're totally missing the vote by not considering leaving some of these driveways for turnouts for machinery.
What did Paul say about the driveways? He already made a comment about it, didn't he?
Well, any farmer that wants to leave is.
They have to go to him and I think they're gonna get applied if they put it right.
Yeah, they have some new driveways. And they're nice.
They're building pretty nice driveways.
If a farmer has one of his property, he wants it left in, go see the driveway guys and they're gonna look at it.
You come up here and talk to you guys if you know. They don't care.
Sure.
They don't care if.
What they can talk is that they're still gonna have to get them to come out, approve the pipe if it's in the right position or if everything works. That's gonna be the only thing.
They have to get a permit from them.
Permit. They're gonna have secondary.
Get it.
Just like they're putting in a new driveway.
Yeah, I just wanna say each driveway that was put into your specs.
Yep.
It's compacted later and everything is kosher.
Gets better than we thought they were gonna be originally.
Better driveways than you guys.
Well, they're good driveways.
They're compacted with a.
Yeah, 'cause they have to have it for their equipment to utilize what they're doing.
The guy told me he doesn't care if they have to take any out, they just need them.
No, they told us that too. We heard that same story. He said they'd leave them in if they don't want them out.
But when I'm getting answers, I don't care, it's none of my business. But I know in our area, any area with this machine, we got it. And you're in a big combine and you should know that. And you see a semi coming with ninety thousand pounds on.
Somebody's got a little lower and it's gotta be the combine.
And the semi gets over, guess what? Gets really tough on the roads.
Right.
The neat drive, you know, what you do is you look for a driveway to get off on the combine or the course truck that you get off.
But I do think these can be left in if that's what the farmer wants. You just have to get the permit to make sure.
Well, I'm just saying we should leave some in just for turnouts. But Paul's totally against driveways, so good luck on that. But I just think.
Well, Gary, I think a lot of the reason Paul's, he's looking at public safety 'cause when somebody goes and ditch, hits the driveway, I think that's, I don't know when they come up with this ordinance, when they had to have so many, only so many driveways per so many feet and so many feet apart between driveways. I get their concern about public safety.
But they changed the driveways.
And they're more slow.
If you're doing one now, you're gonna hurt.
They're better.
The old ones you did.
Yeah, see, I think one of the changes here, Gary, was when we first heard about this, we thought they was gonna be temporary, just shoddy things. Later on, we found that they're gonna be very good driveways. That's when the change was, they're gonna leave them in. At first, we thought they were just gonna be something shown up there. We didn't want those to stay in. It's a different story now. They should stay if anybody wants them.
Well, I think the county needs to think about leaving a few in there. I would think with a couple of.
I think they'll probably all get.
Get them up north.
Well, they're up north. They follow the power line.
The old power line, yeah.
Wherever the power pole is, there's a driveway.
I called from Highway eighteen down here two weeks ago.
Right, they're all the way up.
They're all the way. Their pole's gonna drive.
But I did think originally they were gonna put them in the center and I think.
I was understanding they were using the driveway as a place to set, help set from, but.
That's not the case.
No.
And, uh.
But from what I understood, the farmer has the first choice on whether he wants the driveway in or out.
That's right.
And then all he has to do is come in and ask.
Come in and ask for it. That's what the head guy told me.
That's what I do.
That's the understanding I have.
I don't think there'll be a farmer that won't at least ask about it, 'cause they are nice driveways. We don't have rock driveways like that.
Cause on land, I don't believe. But I just want the farmers to know what's going on. I think there should be.
Well, maybe we should run a little ad in paper.
I think you should.
I mean, at least be warned or let them. I don't think there's nothing wrong with doing that.
And I happen to know the guy personally that dealt with you guys and just for the record, Noma County was the worst county to deal with.
For what? From the electric people?
Just getting the.
From the electric people?
Everything, yeah. You guys. And he mentioned who?
Well, we asked more questions than some of the others. In the end, we come along, we're the same as what Cusworth did.
Yeah, yeah.
We bothered Cusworth pretty well. They've already had a tile, see, a farmer's tile, you know, these are questions we had and hopefully that gets resolved, but that's a private one, so we really don't deal with that. But we had issues with county tile.
There's more to it than I don't want to say.
Well, there's a lot more to it, but there always is.
That's all I got.
Ms. Johnson. Good morning. I'm Jamie Johnson. I'm representing the libraries of Humboldt County and this is Marilyn Johnson from Laverne. I wanna thank you for your, we are not. And I wanna thank you for your generous support of libraries in the past. As you well know, we have a very excellent education program in Humboldt County and they teach how to read. We believe our job is to teach them to love to read. Libraries are very beneficial. They've become almost a hub for the community. We have a few facts I put together. If you wanted to check out something in Humboldt County, you could choose between sixty-five thousand things. If you include downloadable eBooks or audiobooks, you could choose between almost eighty-four thousand things. We circulated almost ninety-one thousand items last year. We had sixty-nine thousand people visiting our library. We had eight thousand, eight hundred children's programs, almost five hundred teen programs, twelve hundred adult programs. Sixty-one hundred people came in, used our Wi-Fi. Although we are not asking for any technology money, if we don't wanna be left behind, we have to be on top of the latest technology. When somebody doesn't know how to use it, you know who they come to? They come to us. We have to keep on top of that. What we would like to do is ask for five thousand, five percent increase in of what we got last year.
Does workforce development still have computers down there or has that been a kind of?
They never had computers. They wanted us to have an ICOM and we do have one.
Does anybody ever use it?
Almost never.
Do they give you problems when they? That was one of the concerns, they're gonna take a lot of your time because they didn't want it. Has that been a problem?
The problem that we have is we have all kinds of protection on our secure, on our computers and most of us have IT specialists. So we have to pay them to come in, you know, as things are updated for virtually something that is really not used. But we do, we do have it available.
When they close those offices, that's the reason they want to come out and make it available to people?
Yes.
You know how successful it's gonna be?
It's very rarely used.
I got two questions. One is, do the cities that the libraries are in, do they increase regularly like three percent to the budget or are they maintaining the same amount of investment dollars?
This is my first year.
Oh.
So, um.
Is there where you could find out for us? And maybe let Peggy know?
Yes.
I mean, I'd like to know if, you know, if the cities, when we get asked for a three percent increase, you know, if the cities are matching that each year or do they have constant dollars that they're putting towards it?
Okay. I have proposed my budget for this year and.
I don't know if they have in the past, 'cause we only see ours. I never, you know, I never get to the city councils to see what they might do, but I know like in Renwick or I'm area, I know they give to the libraries, but I don't know if it's a constant. I guess I could ask the city clerk too. Maybe the city clerks could answer that too, I don't know. I mean, they would know what their budget, you know, how it changes every year. And then if you could find that out. And then the other question I had is, have any of the libraries ever applied for the Humble County Foundation grant for some of these technologies? I bring that up to libraries every year, it doesn't seem like they ever pursue that as because of their tax status or is there a reason why they couldn't apply for those funds?
I don't think there is a reason why we couldn't.
Because you know, when I was on the foundation fund committee, anything that was relating to children and advancement of technology, you know, it's very easy to get five thousand dollars. I mean, I just don't under, I think that's one area you guys are missing as far as reaching out and, you know, other areas to find funds.
Okay.
And maybe they would, maybe there's some regulation.
They do have to attend a meeting in December to qualify. I don't know when that meeting is this year, maybe it's gone.
Ah.
But that's one of the things you have to do.
It's December. It is December.
Yeah. Here is the fiscal years. This is just the budget.
Oh, okay.
And it goes thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, so thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Okay.
How do you know about that?
A lot of times it's in the paper, that's why I wonder if it's occurred already.
You know, Ken?
I haven't heard anything.
You know.
Once I'm setting it.
Oh, what's the?
That'd be a great.
One of the, a good guy to talk to would be the, what's that birdie at Northwest Bank?
He does.
I think he was on, I think he was an officer and another one like.
Greg Darling's on, I think, too.
You know what, Greg Darling would be a good one to talk to.
Oh, great.
Or we could give him a call too and ask him, but I have a feeling that they have, 'cause I haven't seen it in the paper. Normally they have at least a little article on it that you need to, anybody applying for funding. But I really, I thought one of the libraries got some on time, but I don't think, I don't think they pursued that later enough. I think you could, you'd pursue it almost every year.
Okay, I know. What was it before that they got all kinds of technology, like the Dell computer? That was deep. That was gay. And Humboldt, we didn't meet the qualifications, so we never got that.
But the Humboldt Foundation, they have dollars of gambling revenue that comes in. You know, the last, when I was on it, it was eighty, ninety, five. I think it's well over a hundred something.
We do get, we do get for the gambling.
Yeah.
You're not on that board anymore, Gary?
No.
Oh, I didn't know that.
No, I switched. Someone from Renwick took that.
Okay.
Yeah, but it would be interesting just to see, you know, on the cities, you know, if there's a shortfall, do they just pick it up or, I mean, maybe each city looks at it different, but I know Renwick supports it. I just was curious how they, if they increase it every year, how they do it too.
When we put your request on our budget, we start crunching numbers in January, February, we see how it comes out. We can't promise anything today.
Okay.
Can't tell everybody the same answer.
All right, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Yeah, thank you for those. Of course, absolutely. You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask Gary, I'm gonna ask Terry Myers to somehow.
Let's do claims.
What they do.
Yeah, let's do claims. Did anybody look at claims?
No, I didn't look at them.
I reviewed the claims, that's like a hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven oh one point nine five in general claims and twelve thousand, two, 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 three, one for drainage. I moved approval thereof.
I'll second Carl.
Any other discussion? Not in favor?
Aye.
Post motion carries. Discuss the possible cancellation of January fifth board meeting. Do the meeting on the second.
Would that work, Peggy, for you?
You bet.
Then I like the idea.
Does our LEC meeting, he likes it, I like it. Does our LEC meeting get canceled till the next week too, though?
We could ask him to, say he don't have to come in.
That makes sense to me.
I'll make a motion that we cancel the January fifth, twenty fifteen board meeting.
Second?
Second.
I think it only makes sense since we by law have to meet the second anyway, so it just makes, it does stop to change that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post motion carries.
Can I see the claims, please? Just to look at them. Quick, thank you.
These are motions are going to drainage.
I'll make the motion going to drainage.
You're second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post motion carries. Any other discussion? Not in favor?
Aye.
Post motion carries.
I think it only makes sense since we by law have to meet the second anyway, so it just makes, it does stop to change that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post motion carries.
Can I see the claims, please? Just to look at them. Quick, thank you.
These are motions are going to drainage.
I'll make the motion going to drainage.
You're second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll get yours for you.
(inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
These are motions are going to drainage.
I'll make the motion going to drainage.
You're second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll get yours for you.
(inaudible). 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 So we gotta change the date?
Yes, we do.
Why?
Well, Mike Horland is, um, it's a holiday, it's Martin with thirteen days.
Oh, it's a federal holiday.
So he is not gonna be technically at work, so he wondered if we could reschedule for that purpose. So January twenty-sixth at nine o'clock.
What do you want to schedule?
Or January nineteenth.
We gotta take the nineteenth off, huh?
Yes.
Go to the next. January what?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
You got an open time?
Time, five minutes.
Nine o'clock. Is that right? Okay for you?
That's fine.
Do we have a motion for that date?
I move we strike the nineteenth and insert the twenty-sixth for bid letting at one twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Not in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries. Any else?
Nothing, I'm aware. Anything with you? Anything new?
Guys are still working, aren't they? Repairs and stuff? Plug's still out, isn't it?
Yes, he is.
Good.
He's alive.
You don't think he's out now, though, do you?
Um, no.
All right.
I mean, he does start a little.
He kinda starts a couple different, yeah.
Yeah. Good crew to go on.
He's got some more help now.
Yeah.
Okay. The motion about drainage.
Don't move.
Second?
I'll second.
Second by Rick. All in favor?
Aye.
Post motion carries.
Did we put diesel fuel for the county?
I think we did way back in June or July.
I think we did too.
Some mistake.
Yeah. But look, Dean's got Dean's field oil. He's got four thousand dollars for fuel. It should be a three, I mean, it should be a third of the last.
Down to what, two ninety-nine now on the pump, diesel fuel?
Well, not diesel, I mean diesel, yeah. But I mean gas, it's like for this, Dean's should come down a thousand bucks a month. It was dollar ninety-nine in Huxley.
Really?
Yeah.
It was, it really?
Yeah, it's twenty cents cheaper than it is here.
It takes about thirty bucks less to fill the tank and used to, I know that.
Yeah. You can see on the road, you can see on the road, there's a lot of people driving most of that time of year, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I run and fill my lump every time it goes down. I think man.
Well, soon as Peggy.
Then it goes down again.
You can sit up here.
Oh, good. You went to.
The real, we got the real monsters for you.
Yeah.
That new, Jerry?
Yeah, I got a couple pairs I'm trying, I got some sick of the chairs, I screw it.
Happens to all of us.
I hate them. I just, I don't wear them when I don't have to, but I can't read anymore of them. These are tri-fold.
All right. They're not bad, I don't think they're better than the ones that Kathy has on.
It's a bright sunny day.
It has been.
Gee, I know it.
Just like London.
Oh, yeah.
London.
Just be thankful it isn't snow.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just. I've been to London all the time.
Like this.
Mm.
That's why we had such a big, oh, county social services had to write a big check. Hundred thou, I wonder why our bills are up, claims are up, I see social services had a hundred thousand dollar check they had to write.
She's down here to give it back to us, so.
Oh, I'll bet. No, I had a meeting Wednesday, I don't think we're gonna get it back. I hope I can remember everything we talked about that day. We had an executive meeting Wednesday with Bob in Charles City with executive offers, it was kinda interesting. More changes coming, right Kathy?
That's right.
Did you lose many off your board?
Well, um, what was his name? No, Craig White. We had our chairman, he didn't get reelected, but he would've been done anyway, 'cause we wouldn't move up. I can't think of his.
There's a whole bunch.
Leader.
Yeah, yeah.
He didn't get reelected. Democrats, but he didn't get reelected. No, that's just pretty damn.
That's really, never tried Gary.
Yeah. Craig did.
Okay, we have, first of all, I'm gonna start off with, we have to reinstate a homestead that we canceled for this person and they were out of their home for a while. It was like, I believe, I don't know if it was a care center or not really care center, but anyway, they're back in their home now and would like to have the homestead reinstated, so.
That's all I care.
So that's that one and that's the only one for that. And then we have the cancellations for the two thousand and thirteen family farm tax credits.
A few of those, I bet.
Yeah, there's a few. And, you know, a lot of them are, they resign or something else or, and some of them are just cancellations and here's the new ones. And the reasons for cancellation are on the list, uh. Sometimes you just have, where they do some change of ownership and that sort of thing and, um, within the family and, or whatever, have them resign.
So we really need a motion to reinstate the homestead exemption.
Yes.
I move to reinstate the previous motion to remove them from the homestead exemption.
I'll second that motion.
Any other discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Did you wanna see the new ones or?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. Peggy, you can have those. Okay. Let's see, do you need this too? The reinstatement of the homestead? I'll get a copy. Okay. Okay.
So your motion was the reinstatement?
Mm-hmm.
Now we need a motion for approval and disallowance of the evidence?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll make the motion for the farm, family farm approvals and disallowance of two thousand and fourteen.
Second? Any other discussion? Not in favor?
Aye.
Post motion carries.
What does that amount to, less than a dollar and eight, or is it?
Uh, it's usually been kinda like around a dollar. Uh, it's usually been kinda like around a dollar. I feel the barriers, it depends on how many sign up, how much money they have, and that sort of thing, so. It's real signing up, so.
Well, they sign up for that. It's permanent, so they don't have to do it every year.
Right, unless something changes within the ownership, or who's doing the farming.
The relatives, they still claim it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Or ten.
Usually it's either someone cast away or they've moved.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Moving to town, looks like. You read these names and you just say, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Know exactly where, or what happened. Let's see that quickly.
So, is that it then, huh? Okay.
Do you need this?
Uh, that's Peggy's. We'll get to her. There you go.
Thanks, see ya.
Yeah. Here comes her money back.
Comes what?
Yeah. Carl was old and he wondered why we were sending that twenty eighty agreement. I said, oh, I just found out myself when Kathy talked.
This is just the first quarter, um, general assistance report, the review and approval for filing, um. No, um, I guess nothing in there that really should stand out. It's our loan closet rental, our quarter, our payment to Upper Des Moines. We did, um, several assistance with rent and utilities, and then we also had two funeral services that were paid during the first quarter, so. I think anything real outstanding or out of the ordinary there with that.
Funeral services, Kathy, that's something we pay towards the funeral burial, or what is it?
Yes, yep.
But they.
Yeah, for in the gym.
Do you have a minimum on the funerals, or a maximum, or how the?
Yeah, or is that?
Yeah.
Is that only charge?
Don't ask me.
Think that's only charge? Don't they get?
Yeah, it's, it's cremation only.
Oh.
And there is a max, there is a maximum.
So we had two little.
Correct, right. Which is, yeah.
Two different ones, and five dollars difference.
Yeah, well, there's two different funeral homes, I believe, so.
One's five dollars super.
Yeah.
They know the limit, the limit's probably two thousand, I imagine.
Yeah, I think so.
Mm-hmm. Looks good.
Were your twelve thousands, that's typically right on budget, or?
We're, we're okay, I mean, for, yeah.
Gee, that was a nice report. I don't remember getting those. Kinda nice to see the breakdown.
Those I need to have back.
Oh, yeah, I don't know, I see how they got these. We'll just look at that. Yeah, I guess that's true.
Your motion for accept.
There you go.
Any other quarterly report?
I'll second.
Can I have that one, Carl? Cause it's gotta be.
Aye.
Rescind action, terminate twenty eighty.
Okay. Um, take, I'm gonna take us back to June here. Um, at the time that the previous director, um, has, had refined and the board meeting where, um, that was accepted along with discussion regarding, um, separation or termination of the twenty eighty agreement sharing targeted case management with Wright County. Um, that, um, a letter of intent to terminate was signed on that day, and, um, the agreement remained in place until December thirty first, which is close approaching. And it is, um, the regional targeted case management program is not ready, um, for us to, to go into at this point in time. And the, the thought was that by August or September that that would happen. The, the application for the region to be a targeted case management entity has been accepted. Um, but they'll need to submit the cost report and get the rate and do those things. So the target date is now February, um, of, of fifteen, so we'll keep our fingers crossed, but.
I don't know, Bob thought it might be right up to July first, so I'm not.
Yeah, 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 and it, it.
But it's no big deal because we don't wanna, we want, we don't wanna cancel it till we get this all resolved.
Right, and so, um, Wright County, um, the same proposal is being submitted to their board today as well. And, and it's my understanding that they are in agreement as well to, um, rescind that action so that we can keep our, our case management program operating as one. They really, I don't believe, have the desire to, you know, try to run their own program, and they as well wanna go into the regional case management program. So we really need our twenty eighty agreement to remain in effect, you know, indefinitely here until we can become a part of a regional program. And then also finish conducting, you know, remaining billing and cost reporting activities together jointly with them. So we'll just have to continue to evaluate that ongoing, so.
In the areas Kathy, you had some exchange of people back and forth, some of them working with Wright County over here and over there, having an agreement with it. Am I misunderstanding?
You mean exchange of clients, or?
No, personnel to help handle the compliance, work in the case, so.
Um.
Or pretty much a help. Maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Yeah, basically, our programs operate as one, so we have one provider number, and all of the staff, whether they're housed here in our office or, or their office, are a part of North Central Iowa Case Management. And so, I'm not sure what you're asking as far as exchanging. It is now. It is now, and we're requesting that it remain that way rather than to stop on December thirty first, so.
You have to write up a new twenty eighty since you already can't rescind it once?
No, because it was just the letter of intent to terminate what was signed on July thirtieth. We, that, we, um, sat down a couple of weeks ago and reviewed that all with the regional director, and his, his recommendation was to just rescind that, letter of intent to terminate.
So from February, that will dissolve hopefully and then become part of the region entity?
Well, at the point where, um, the regional program is able to.
Handle things, yeah.
You know, um, begin to accept enrollments and have a cost report that's been accepted, um, we'll come back to the board for, you know, resolutions.
And as Bob said, it might be a little longer than that, cause we, there's their time tables, but he said, you know. Hopefully by July first, all of this will be clean, cleared out.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have to come back and have more discussion with the board at that time to ensure that that's what, you know, Humboldt County wants to do, um, you know, at that point. You know, as of the last discussion, it was, it was the intent, um, kind of the direction we were headed, but we'll have to review that at such a time that that's available as an option. And then, you know, present the board with the option to accept a, a resolution or agreement, whatever they determine is needed to, to make that entity function, so.
So how were you getting your presentation for the case management?
Um, the, our program is still, you know, we still have our accreditation. Um, if we aren't into another program, we'll be due this summer for, for our individual programs accreditation. But the, um, the regional program already has an accepted application and a two hundred and sixty day, I believe, accreditation. And then they will come in and, and survey and then make a determination beyond that, so.
So is the region of the state with the ICAC, CCMS, or where is that all?
I don't know. They, they could, I mean, they could, you know, join as a region, that new, um, you know. That new process that's available.
counties did.
Yes, yeah, I don't know what the amount is, Harlan. Do you?
I don't, I don't remember.
Yeah, I don't either. But that'll be, you know, that's all a part of the cost reporting process when they gather all the financial information from counties that are gonna become a part of that. I'm sure that'll be considered if they'll utilize that technical assistance or, or something else. I know their, their thought is, you know, with some of the, um, oh, and I can't think of the position. They have two lead disability service coordinators, and I, I believe the intent is that they will, you know, provide some of the technical assistance, so. But I don't know. That's the thought at least.
Well, I'll make a motion to, um, rescind the, let's see if I can find where I'm at. Okay, rescind our action taken on six, thirteen, fourteen, determine the twenty eighty agreement with TMC programs for Humboldt, Wright County.
Your second?
You taking the motion?
Any other discussion? If it's not, all in favor?
Aye. Mister Chairman, I would ask, now, since Kathy's here, we have a little, our next item is nine thirty, isn't it? I, I, we had a executive meeting on Wednesday with Bob, and since Kathy's here, I mean, I, I know I didn't get all these ideas that he threw out to us clear. I mean, I usually could handle those, but he threw out a lot. Well, no, he put it on the chart board, you know, I'm like, step down, and I'm thinking about this, and I'm absorbing it, and there's three of us there, and we're, you know, we're. This, this is a real changing thing. I mean, I, and it, it really takes involvement to, I mean, I'm trying to fully understand this, and I missed a couple of meetings because, you know, I had things going with family issues. And you try and keep up, and I know Kathy's been great. I mean, Bob's been really happy with Kathy's doing a good job, and I'm, I'm very happy. I mean, I think, what's making this work, it, I'm trying to explain this, the structure they're looking at a little bit, it's kinda interesting. But we're kind of going back to every county having a person like Kathy in their county. It's not really a Don because Don was in charge of what Kathy does, plus administration, and the reporting, and all these different. He was kinda doing everything as a single county. With the twenty-two counties, really Kathy's role is to really do the work in the county, what I see it, and the administration, if you understand, help me through this. And the administration comes from a higher level, and that's kinda how they, that's how we're trying to gain efficiencies. But along the way, I, I kinda figured this would happen, but you kinda see it with, um, elevators when they merged, and you had all these individual managers, and they became assistant managers. Then all of a sudden, you have another little bit of a layer above some of them. But it looks like we're looking at some, he's gonna present it next month, January twenty eighth meeting, but I think it's kinda gonna be like a medical, uh, let's see if I got. One side of his medical service, and I think there's gonna be a couple of Don CEOs above you guys for the region, so like, there's twenty. Help, help me with that Kathy, I'm just not getting all this yet. I'll just shake my head if I figure you're the one.
I mean, basically what, you know, Bob will continue to be the chief executive officer and be, you know, parallel with the county social services board, and then under, you know, there'll be a medical, clinical medical director. Um, but as far as, um, they'll be, he's creating a, um, chief financial officer and a chief operating officer. That will, will branch out, um, you know, and absorb, you know, I think some of the things that, that he's.
Well, I kinda wanted you to explain this, cause I, I know Carl's had that, or, or other board members on the board have had, you know, Bob, are you trying to do too much? Cause you know, he has a certain count, as he was saying, and this is his way of getting this kinda re-delegated. And I think it helps Kathy because then she knows what, you know, she knows she doesn't have to handle the administration part or the financial, I mean, that's somebody else's job to bring that and get it in line. And then she can concentrate on doing work in the county, which every county wants that person there to be close with the clientele and the people and the connections. So that's part of this process.
And it's my understanding, I think Bob will, in the counties that he, he continues to manage, that he'll, um, there will be a disability service coordinator appointed that in lieu of him.
Okay, I'll follow.
Um, yeah, doing those functions, but then he's looking at, um, two lead disability service coordinators that will split, you know, half and half. That will, they won't be supervisory but support, you know, so.
How it's gonna look to you. Okay, I wasn't quite clear on that. I didn't get all that.
Yeah, yeah, they'll be present in the counties.
Kinda oversee a, a region in.
Part, yeah, yeah.
Like twelve of the, or eleven of the counties in each one, roughly, depending on populate, you know, there's a lot of variables on how they'll set it. More, I think he was talking maybe, I think he said east and west maybe would be the split. I'm not sure.
I'm, I'm not sure if they're looking.
Eastern or, I think.
North, south, or east, west, I'm not sure.
Now.
Yeah, but.
That was part of that.
And I think those people, cause one of the points I brought up is that we really need, you know, the chain of command, if you have a person out, say.
Who'd you go to?
I'm, I'm gone, then somebody needs to.
This person could maybe fill in.
Be able to step in, right.
Okay, that's a good, that's a good thought.
And that person will also fulfill that for the counties, cause that's kind of a, you know, difficult situation to be in if you have, you know, unanticipated absence and being the person that, that people can go to.
So that's a kinda general overview on that side, but then on the other side, it's more interesting. This, they call it a triage team. Can you tell me a little more about that? You hearing more of that?
Well.
I'll.
They're looking, yeah, I mean, they're looking at a, a clinical director and a, um, clinical staff that will help to assist with assessment, especially, um, you know, with, with mental health commitments.
Okay, so my understanding of this is that if we can get this up and going, it's gonna help the police department, or the sheriff's departments immensely, because it's post at work. It's helping find the locations without them driving all over the place trying to get somebody. And then to assess if they need to go, I mean, I think the assessment they can do without going through the police sta, or the sheriff's department and putting somebody in to find out if they need an assessment. Is that kinda what this is gonna do?
Um, they're gonna help with assessment and placement. I don't know how much it'll help with the, the drive time just because of our proximity.
But the assessment would help because you would determine if they should go to extended, need extended cares in what areas.
And it should also help to reduce, um, you know, the lengthy times that deputies or them are sitting in the emergency room waiting for somebody to find.
Everybody drives there when they start talking about this idea, cause it makes sense.
They sit for four hours.
And that, and that's where the hope is really, that you'll eliminate that, you know, they'll be able to get that person, you know, safely to a location where they can be assessed. And then the, the bed or location can be found if that person needs hospitalization, so.
And it sounds all good, but I'm sure it'll be glitchy, but I also thought he mentioned that this is being practiced in Minnesota, Wisconsin. There's areas that are doing this and have had great success with it. I mean, in fact, I think Minnesota, Wisconsin might be a statewide deal. Now, see, we're just as a region trying this. We don't know, at first, we wanna try to just stay within our region, not, let's not get carried away. I don't know if this thing would develop to a statewide thing, or each region would have to develop, I mean, it depends on how it goes, if it works or not, but.
Yeah, and I believe.
Something's gotta change.
Yeah, I believe it's his intent to utilize the crisis stabilization center there in Waterloo, kind of as a.
I thought he mentioned Fort Dodge, too.
CFR.
I think he mentioned both, and I think we could utilize.
Correct.
And then there was a third part, and it has, you know, we have our reserves of about seven and a half million, I think that's right. We're about thirty-five, I mean, it's a little more, there might be nine million. And of course, state is only gonna want us, they really think twenty-five percent is enough, but I, when we, months, months ago, I made, I said, I think it should be more than that, just because you know how that, things change so much in this business. But it, we're gonna be switching over, um, the residential part, you know, what he called the group, the units, like in the unit, the homes, they gotta get them out into the public.
The bigger, um.
Help me with this.
The, the licensed residential care facilities, you know, there's, there's a push, just like, you know, the institutionalization from the MHIs and ICF facilities.
Just like what we're seeing in Clear Lake, those type, where they're trying to get them out into homes.
Correct, um, you know, so, yeah, reduction definitely in the.
But my understanding is, you know.
Population in RCF facilities.
The first couple of years, it, it could drain down like three million off of our savings for the first two years, but as we transition them, then Medicare picks that up. Is that correct, for Medicaid, Medicare?
Well, I think, I think what he is looking at is, you know, startup of, um, a team of, of individuals or several teams within the region that will help build, um, and be a support to providers. To manage, um, provision of services to some of the, the folks that have more challenging needs.
And that can be reimbursed then, right, through services through?
Not the, not the startup of that.
Not the startup, but, no, but.
Right.
As, as they're on.
Yeah.
The medical side, I mean, the insurance will cover this at some point, I'm getting, is that, yeah, and that, we're hoping as that transitions, the dollars flow back in to offset this. But I, I think it's gonna, if it isn't already mandated, it's gonna happen. I mean, they want these homes to go away, they want more integrated.
Integrated settings for individuals.
So we gotta deal with, you know, we just gotta, the thing is, if they don't come up your own plan, somebody's gonna tell you how to do it again.
Well, yeah.
And then.
That's my only concern about that, uh, are all those people we're gonna take out of those homes and stuff in Clear Lake, I mean, they're not all at the same level. You can't paint them all the same brush. My concern is we got some that need to be in those facilities, and some can.
Good point, you know.
But I, I get the impression that we're, we're picking them all out, and that's the way it is. Is that the correct impression?
Well, I, I don't think it's county social services that doing, that doing that, it's, yeah.
It's the federal government, it started there.
Yeah, yeah, it's definitely the movement, and, you know, like, like Jerry pointed out, though, I mean, you've gotta have a way to, to support these individuals. And you have to start, you know, building the provider capacity to do so if they're going to be, you know, in community-based and integrated settings.
Kathy, the ones with the most need, what would you see happening there? I mean, are they gonna be the last to go? I mean, it's.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I.
So then you got these facilities that are just half full, and then.
Yeah, I mean, I, I.
That's working good and just ruining.
Well, I mean, because somebody, I got, if somebody come up with the idea, we got, it'd be good. Some days. Sorry.
I do.
Well, that's why.
You primarily deal with most of that with your two committees.
I know, it's just.
It's always me.
Kathy, is Bob, like, still managing some counties himself as well, he may be CEO?
Yeah, but I, but as, as a part of the restructuring Jerry's talking about, he's gonna appoint, I believe, a disability service coordinator in those counties so he can, yeah.
Over those, and then what I heard from Bob, yeah, and we were in Charles City, his home office, and he mentioned, I can't think of her name, but he mentioned it. Said really, honestly, the lady that works for, she's doing all his, I mean, he's not really doing, Renee, yeah. I think she's doing it now anyway, so I think that transition is coming. He'll, she'll actually have his county pretty quick, cause this has gotten way bigger than, than it ever was thought it was gonna be.
You know, they get this reorganization going within our region, it's working fine. How are these little regions gonna work? They can't have all those people. Some of them's only got four or five.
I wonder if they're gonna eventually be absorbed into other regions or something, I don't know.
I don't know either.
Except some of the regions have such a big populace, you know, I mean. Well, then the other thing, just to throw things out, you know, that, um, what's that forty-eight, what's that forty-seven dollar thing called again, uh, the?
Levy.
Levy, thanks. Well, he kept talking about a thirty-eight dollar, and I don't know, the only difference, eighty-nine, thirty-eight plus levy would be kinda where the, where they think they're gonna have to fall into. And several counties, we're, most, we're, we're getting equalized, cause you know, some of these counties are, the ones are below this number, definitely gonna have, are coming up to that. And the ones above it, they're trying to get them, you know, we're trying to work it back, cause it's property ta, tax related. But he does feel our budget can fly off of that number, so. But it is good to have the reserve. That's where I get a little concerned about having, you know, fifteen percent reserve ain't enough for twenty-four million dollar operations, let alone just a cash flow one month, you know? Cause all of a sudden, when we're short money and, and Kathy gets called, Peggy asks to get money a little quicker than we want to, well, our budget's short too, you know, at times. So there's only times that we can send out those large amounts of checks too, so. I don't wanna see that, I really don't wanna see that excess get too low, but, you know, the state is always looking at ways for us to lower property tax now and everything else, so. All these things are entering in, but as a region, I, from what I'm getting, I feel confident we're probably doing good things. I think we're probably moving in the right direction. It's just that you really constantly gotta keep changing and moving ahead, stay ahead of all this stuff, so.
What's going on in those counties? It's way above the forty-eight dollars levy, but they have to get back to it. Are they having to cut services or change things around, or retire people, or what's going on there?
Not that I'm aware of, because it's all.
Well, equalization was there, but that, you know, that's only gonna be there so long.
That's gonna hit some of them this next.
I think it is, Peggy.
Because even our rate is being knocked down because we had some savings in there, so we can't charge the full.
So like, if they have savings in their individual county and they're above, they're probably gonna be knocking that. They're, they're gonna have to get, they're coming.
The state sends you a list and sets you on this list, and you will knock your, your.
And I thought Bob mentioned, we, we don't have that many, we're getting closer to that. There's a couple that are kinda need some work yet, but I think a lot of them are gonna, in the next fiscal year to the next one, I think we're gonna get a lot of them back in lawns. Which, which it probably has to, it does, yeah. Anything else, Kathy?
No, that's, that's more than that.
Appreciate your help.
Giving Jerry's report.
I couldn't, well, yeah, I just, I knew I was gonna try and give this report, I gave you one of them, one of them, we are transporting mental patients right now.
I'd pick on you a little bit.
You need to, I don't know, the sheriff keeps saying, I'm, I have so much to do.
I still think that'd be the way to go.
Very complicated.
Cause the twenty-four hours a day they transport right now. And it's just not juvenile. Oh, no, no, it's not just juvenile, transportation service.
Dean, is Dean aware of it?
Dean's aware of this service, isn't he?
Dean?
Who's told him that many times?
Yeah, I've given, the paper, you're giving that to, okay. He knows about it, but he, I don't know. Could save him paying overtime for another deputy to come in while he's gone, or they're gone. And I'm sure that's more than what they charge, paying overtime to a deputy.
Yeah. Thanks Kathy.
All right, thank you, yeah.
That's the one from INS group, um, for them to continue to do planning for you and get this put together. They're doing the site survey, civil engineering, architecture features, structural engineering, mechanical engineering, which is the plumbing, air conditioning, electrical, interior design, construction, and then they have their rates cut out there as to what they recharge for one of those features, but before they go forward, they need to have your approval.
When, when were they supposed to find out about the grant? Did that be over saved?
You mean Linda?
Yeah, for the technology grant, yeah, that will be actually probably April, I think she told me. No, I guess our budget's already set then.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's what she, when I talked to her, she said it could be in April. And I mean, it's not gonna be like three, four hundred thousand, it's gonna be fifteen, maybe to a hundred in that ballpark is what we're hoping.
But we're to stay unless we get signed documents to get them going. They don't wanna put their neck on the line either. All we're risking, if we pull out, that's all we risked what we've done thus far, is that right?
Yeah.
Well, it's like everything, until we get this kinda completed, we just can't, we're just, and it's, that's just how it works, I'm afraid. What do you think about those costs? Are those reasonable? I guess, you see, it's always designed, there, and what I mean, it adds up in a hurry, but you gotta have it.
Well, I don't think ninety-six bucks a night is really
After the preliminary, no, probably not.
And they have been paid some money for some of the progress.
Oh, they, okay, we've already paid some.
Okay, they did preliminary, yeah.
Did the school utilize this group at all?
No.
City's used it, I suppose.
Mm-hmm.
City sees these guys.
Okay.
Well, I think we ought to move ahead. I'd authorize the chairman to sign a professional services contract with proposal with the firm as proposal. If the dollars stated and the services rendered.
Any second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? No, in favor?
Aye.
Rules, motion carried. Well, we can, uh, right here?
Yep.
I know Linda's still working on some of the grant, you know, sending emails back and forth. They thought more plans we use for four months, sorry.
Right, right. Well, we gotta have a, we gotta have a, a plan. Yeah, that's part of it, move plan for her to move forward, too.
You don't wanna give it to us, we're paying for it.
No.
Okay, authorize chairman to sign documentation for USDA loan grant for LAC remodeling addition.
That's the second part of the information that he used. Rick has been good to gather a bunch of the information that Linda needed, um, plus she sent me some forms that had to be filled out, so, turned on the checkbox and went back sometime. I told them the rest of it, um, and I guess they're ready to sign, and then I need to get them back to Linda so she can do it today.
I make a motion, authorize chairman to sign those documents for the USDA loan grant for the LAC remodeling addition.
Any second? Any other discussion? If no, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Rules, motion carried.
We're down to just three minutes off of Paul, aren't we?
Yeah, I want to tell, you know, that Renee wanted to visit with you in a strategy session after we're done, about nine point five or four.
So you wanna sign like you're a recipient or?
Yes.
Here?
And she just wanted to go read your proposals.
She's gonna be here at the phone. You guys haven't made any counter proposals yet, have you?
Yeah. Haven't heard from Renee yet.
I think we got, what, two weeks, maybe to answer or something, I don't know.
I know it gets people apart sometimes. All the documents for the LAC, as you notice, are all made out in the name of Humboldt County. Anything that, you know, even though it's a joint building underneath the walls, you know, the building is owned by the county, um, any vehicles or anything are owned by the county, everything, all the different little kind of things. And then I'll scan these, get them to Linda so she can go forward, and then I'll get the originals in the mail.
There you go. Well, okay, we're down to, oh, you just walked in.
We've been waiting for you, Paul.
We're on time today.
Not really.
Anyway. Uh, first order of business is approved application for construction on County Rightaway and request for fifteen hundred dollar reimbursement from Jeff Reeder's for tile crossing between sections nine and sixteen of Acosta. It's on One Twentieth Street, just southwest of Madison, south a mile and west a mile. On your copy, I had noted, uh, some things that remain to be completed, which I have gotten all of those. I have a proof of insurance, I have the sign each hold harmless, and I have a written note from the downstream property owner that says, that's, you gotta have that, uh, that, uh, this is okay. It's not what I would, uh, it's good for us for the crossing. In the long haul, I would encourage property owners to get something more, but I'm aware and given my permission to Jeff Reeder's to install blah, blah, blah.
So he's running a whole new tile line from this quarter down to the dredge?
Dredgestitch, yes.
He's not tying into the other tile at all?
I think he's going to, uh, in, at his property line north Rightaway, I think they're going to, I, hook their current private tile into their private main, uh, because the drainage district tile goes right up to the road and ends at that point. Um, so they're gonna more or less take everything off of the high end of that district tile.
That's what it looks like, yeah.
Um, there is some concern that they get backwater when they get a lot of water.
Oh, he's gonna run it straight through.
They're not gonna put in a bigger, I don't know, that's the line, yeah. They're twenty-four inch, uh, I think they're running twenty-four inch all the way down, but a half mile to get down there.
Yeah.
Um, they started on it last week. They're not to the road crossing yet, but, uh, they have everything in order and, uh,
So basically, this is, it's a landowner's field here, right?
Yeah, somebody else.
Yeah, I mean, the other, that guy's there.
Martin Zoggs.
Oh, it's Martin Zoggs. Oh, okay.
And they're in Mr. Zoggs' field this morning, uh, probably a thousand feet south of the road, and they must've driven about three feet into the field and backed out.
It's a little soft out there.
It was soft today, I bet.
Um, uh, Mr. Redding, uh, fully understands what it means to have, uh, adequate or suitable backfill when the time comes.
That's good.
Yeah, if, if it quits raining and they get hard surface, they'll be up to the road in a day, and then the second day they'll do the crossing. I've yet to see the phone line or anything located in the roads, so, uh, clearly it isn't gonna be today because of the weather related, but, uh, it'll be soon.
I think I knew that one out in one thirty or something, or?
Don't know. Still haven't got anybody that's gonna pull in there and do that yet. Uh, and again, I've talked to several different contractors on that project.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for construction on County Rightaway and request for fifteen hundred dollar reimbursement from Jeff Reeder's for a tile crossing between sections nine and sixteen of Acosta.
Any second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? No, in favor?
I'll, you got plenty of signatures. I'll just leave that off to the side for now. Second order of business is approve hiring temporary part-time labor position for Humboldt County Secondary Roads at fifteen dollars an hour effective December fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, and that individual is Brian Carlson. Brian's already had, uh, pre, pre-employment physical and drug screening, all of which he had five weeks ago with Newco-op, but we ran him through the same thing again. He had worked, uh, some with Newco-op in the fall here after he was done with what they did in the farming. Uh, Brian's out, uh, as we speak this morning, uh, getting trained automotive patrol.
I'd move a higher offer contract, higher fifteen dollars, and I'm Brian Carlson, temporary part-time labor position for county.
Any second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? If not, in favor?
Aye.
Rules, carry.
Third order of business is approve final voucher to Grumback Construction Company for work completed on the Dakota City Shopper. Uh, we've been trying to get final paperwork on that project, and as of, uh, Thursday afternoon, I got all the certifications, uh, and things that we required, uh, with this project. And this one was completed just before cutoff, and, and, uh, we have put gutters on the east side since then, and it's nicely done.
This thing, we got thousand two hundred ninety-five fifteen, right?
Yes.
What, how big are gutters? Put on the bigger ones then, or the little ones? Eight inch, six inch?
I think it went with the bigger gutters. Yeah, you know what? Can't tell you for sure.
Oh, that's
It was almost a coin flip, because you looked at the square, the drainage area, same sized downspout, and the drainage area on that thing with, uh, thirty foot by a hundred with the
Yeah, it's, it's your downspout hole, it takes water.
That's the biggest thing, yeah. Bigger those, better, I change my house in time. I'm looking to approve the final voucher to Grumback Construction for work completed on Dakota City Shopper. It's, it'll be the final payment then, right?
Yes, we're done.
Any second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? No, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Finally, we have approved plans and specifications for the following bridge replacement projects. Uh, these projects are two of our BR projects. Uh, Ben was throwing a curveball earlier in the week, last week, but I think we've got through all of it to meet the federal aid requirements on this BR project. Uh, locally, we've, uh, bid projects, uh, bridge to boxes the same way, which is keep tweaking it, uh, improving it with each project for the last fifteen years, and now all of a sudden DOT wanted us to revise that substantially. And we, I think successfully have navigated through the DOT's, uh, process, and we'll see, but, uh, these are recommendations in our finally submittals, uh, to the DOT to meet all of the DOTs, the federal aid, and, and, uh, and try to keep the, uh, project as cost efficient as possible. We're trying to allow the contractor, the, uh, to come up with, uh, the best combination of concrete and reinforcement for these projects instead of assign that to them. Remember, uh, what we had with the last project on the local letting where they did bid the DOT spec?
Mm-hmm.
Plus ten percent, or, and, and we were trying to get away from that, and I think we did. Uh, we'll see if it makes it through contracts. But, uh, Ben, Ben is, uh, still with us this morning, unfortunately.
Is it, is it different length and pipe due to the skew on the road?
Yes, and depth. Uh, granted, uh, the Corinth one, uh, project is a shallow ditch out there, and it's got some pretty decent slopes. Instead of this much per mile, uh, it's, it's twice that, and it's, uh, we're fortunate to have some slopes on something at one point, and it makes a huge difference in the pipe sizing. Um, there's not as much dirt on that project, and it's nearly perpendicular, therefore it's, and it's depth, so it's, so it's a shorter pipe and thus less money. Uh, actually, that might come in less than what we budgeted for in our five-year plan. I, I, uh, don't, hold me to that about three months from now because it always is scary, but, uh, uh, the other project, uh, the Corinth is a deeper one and skewed a little bit, but, uh, uh, we have both of these in the ninety thousand range, even though one's bigger than the other one, uh, a longer pipe.
Tell me who's the neighbors in these areas again, just refresh my memory, so I pull my flat book out.
Uh, you can see the, should be able to see on, uh, if you can read in those fine print notes, uh, we have Coonerts, uh, on the, uh, on the Beaver one, Frederick's on the south side, and Coonerts on the north, Frederick on the south side.
Yeah, that's the one.
This is a load rated structure just out, uh, a mile north of the white topping.
Yeah.
Straight north, we have a new box culvert on the white topping, and this is the bridge just north of it.
Okay.
On that branch, uh, that runs up.
The Corinth one, I don't know if that
The Corinth one is out there, um,
Who's in Corinth, who knows where they're at?
I believe the east side used to be Sunderman, uh, Sunderman eighty, and it's now, uh,
You know that?
Coleman's, Coleman's block.
I've been out there.
Bob Stark has got the northwest side and the southwest is Tom Becker.
Okay, Becker's, okay. No, I think you're getting there. That's neat.
Well, good deal. Well, we didn't lose Ben, yeah.
Well, it's frustrating when you think, oh, you're done, and then you get, oh, you need to reinvent the wheel here because, uh, we just started doing precast in the DOT a year ago, and now we're gonna change everything.
Yeah.
Okay, any motion to approve the bridge replacement?
I wanna make the motion to, uh, grant it, uh, BRIS CO forty-six and fifty-eight and sixty.
I'll second that motion.
Two bridges, other discussion for the Oops, motion carried.
Um, we have multiple signatures on these, uh, we have three of each. Um, I see one of them isn't a full set for some reason, but, uh, I will get, uh, the board copy to Peggy upon signatures. Uh, I need signatures from Grumback, and I need signatures on the, uh, roadway crossing.
When are you meeting that bid on, next spring?
This is a, uh, March seventeenth bid letting. Uh, it's up, upper left is the bid letting on these for the DOT with a march. With the DOT, we have, what, a fourteen week that we have to have final plans in prior to bidding. So we're looking at trying to get March. If we couldn't get all of this to work and massaged in this timely fashion, then we'd be kicked back to an April fifteenth or April eighteenth, and, and we prefer the March, the mid-winter, uh, lettings where we're going through the DOT, um, try to get on the table early. Uh, I think there is some work that did not get completed. Uh, the bridge contractors, for instance, struggled this summer, and so maybe March won't be a good letting to do bridges. Maybe July would be, who knows? But it, it all depends on the spring we have, Carl, as to what letting we should've had. But with an early, with a winter or an early spring But with an early, with a winter or an early spring letting, either way, they have the whole summer to do it. I prefer them to come in in August or September, either one of these is a gravel road crossing, the later, the better, the chances are, we have less water to deal with.
Yeah.
The worst time ever would be to have somebody to come in April fifteenth.
Yeah.
They come in real bad, you always reject them, you know, that's it. Probably wouldn't do that, but...
It'd be tough. I mean, these are enough, that they've done enough, and hopefully, there's not any new news. We'd like the contractors to get used to what they're bidding with Humboldt County, so they're familiar with our plans and specs and our expectations. It's, if the clearer the plans and specs are, the better the bids you get. And we don't like to mess with them, much as to what they look at, because when they pull, open up a set of Humboldt County plans, they look for the same stuff. And, and they get used to it, and hopefully, we get extremely competitive bids on them.
I wonder if somebody didn't wanna purchase some of that part of property out of them.
Otherwise, uh... No news is good news, uh, I don't think, uh, it looks like we're gonna have a white Christmas, and that doesn't disappoint me.
Just tell me all that, if somebody go here and say, "Well, buy this part of the property."
I think you're right.
No, that's what I was reading, I was thinking... I mean, maybe get us...
Somebody from the conservation wanted to buy property.
Otherwise, uh, we're, uh... We got trucks in wax, we've done a lot of cleaning, um, but, uh, at some point, we've got a lot of trees cut, but there's still plenty of them out there. We've run through three cases of Tordon RTUs, so some...
You're gonna ask me to start spraying, you must be spraying them, then, when you're done cutting them.
Well, no, there's no point to cut, like, you don't treat them. Our only concerns are anywhere near an acre reach.
I see there's one more dead tree that fell down on the, between you and conservation, you know, down there across the bridge, we constantly, those trees are dying out, you know? A big one, that kinda fell, kind of a dry area where they, for that...
Funny, after they die, they become the county's tree, then.
I'm just saying, I don't know why they do, 'cause they always fall into our railway.
Otherwise, any other questions for the county engineer? Very good, thank you.
I got a quick question. How much diesel fuel did we book last year? Did we book?
Did we book, and I remember buying...
I couldn't remember.
We don't book diesel, we buy... Propane, we did, twelve thousand.
We're not hurt there, 'cause that's only down a dime or something.
We did book propane, no, yeah.
Yeah, but it's only down a dime, probably from what we booked. We didn't do any, I, Rick and I were discussing, I just couldn't remember if it's diesel or...
With diesel, we're running above a rack price. Every year, with, with our refined fuels, we run a handling charge, is what we're bidding, so we're running at a rack price plus.
All the time, so average is what it is.
Well, I don't know how, with the fluctuation, okay, I wanna contract all your corn, you give me a price. For next year.
Who knows?
Who knows, and that's when you're asking somebody to do that, I know what you're gonna pay.
Well, I knew we'd contracted something, I guess it was, I never thought it was propane, yeah.
And, and as much as anything that assures our supply.
Yeah, that's what I figured, why we did it on the...
And we did a complete summer fill, uh, which was actually cheaper than what we booked it at, but, again...
Do it, yeah.
We've had success in that, some years, we've stayed away from it, and we've been fortunate, but last year was a living proof that it doesn't hurt to have some book.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Paul.
Okay, Carl, you do anything last week?
Not too much. Earlier in the month, I got that call from the chair, I've done Southwest five one, no, I'm gonna go meet with Chief Justice Caddy, well, I couldn't go, so I called Berlin Matthews. He went down, and they had a meeting about, and that's why I gave you guys this morning copies of what came out of that meeting. Courthouse, safety, some of the things we might have to do is, we definitely gotta do is get a safety committee going for their county in the courthouse, maybe we have one, I don't know. They were suggesting Alice training, and get the clerk of the court involved with all this, all this good stuff, so, more stuff's coming down the tube there.
Hey, you know a lot about this already.
We're gonna have to do that.
I have called several sheriff's office to come train us, and I do not hear back from anybody, I mean, I just call up the police, and nobody calls me back.
So it's, and I don't understand why they're talking about all the buildings, and just, the way you read that document, it says court-related buildings. What do we do about Paul's office, and some counties have human services in different, are they included, I don't know. So it's no man's land. Then some other things that happened this week, on Tuesday the sixteenth, I had a home visit with building families. Went out on the HOPE program here in town, went out, you know, with the Humboldt Health Department. We made a visit to a family with a young child. It's kinda interesting, opened my eyes to what these welfare workers have to do. It's just amazing, you guys get a chance to go on one of those, I guess your tax dollars are well off. This happened to be a family, it's probably not even documented, to be in the United States, but we're paying the bill for it. If you still feel sorry for the kids, that's the problem, and they need help, they over guard it. I listened to that webinar on Wednesday, I don't know whether the rest of you did or not, on the legislation, there wasn't anything really new there. We talked about gas tax, and mental health, and those kinds of things, over and over again. Lucas and Jamie did a real nice job of it, it lasted about a half hour, and there were very few questions. So, that was Wednesday, and Friday, we came up here to courthouse for Linda's retirement. That was it.
All right, Peggy, Wednesday at nine o'clock, I was in Charles City with Bob, Mike, and the executive board, and I've already discussed our options there, so, that's all I had.
Thanks for Kathy.
Yeah, no kidding. I see where I'm coming. I had nothing this week, Peggy.
That's a little late last week.
I had two good things, the day before, they...